Okay, we'll call to order a special meeting of the Glendale City Council for October 30, 2012. May we have a little call, please?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Menuchyan.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Eber.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. May we have your report?
The agenda for the October 30th, 2012, special public meeting of the city council was postponed on Friday, October 26, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item before you is director of community development continued from October 23, 2012 regarding proposed Orange and Wilson development project to be located at 200 West Wilson Avenue. One is the council motion approving combined stage one and two design review, subject to comments and conditions of approval.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. If you saw today's Glendale news press, the headline above the fold is Jewel City on the rise. And I think this project typifies and exemplifies what the sentiment being conveyed in that article really is all about. When you see that the council has created the downtown specific plan with the idea of focusing development and investment from the outside into the community, it really comes together and crystallizes in the last series of projects that the council has seen and again is exemplified by the one that is before you today. We have the stage one and two design review consideration for this sister project to Orange, or rather to Brandon Wilson. And here we have the Orange-Wilson. And certainly not lost on us, and I know not lost on the council, is that this is the same developer coming back to do more business with Glendale because Glendale is a place that does business and gets things accomplished. So with that being said, as an introduction, let me bring up our senior planner, Velia Zemetitis, and she will walk you through the design specifications. Velia?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Quintero, council members. Holland Partner Group is requesting a combined stage one and stage two design review of the Orange and Wilson project. Project itself is located at 200 West Wilson Avenue, located on the southwest corner of Wilson and Orange Street. Just under an acre in size, the site currently now features the Joann's House of Fabric store. The multifamily residential project includes 166 units. There is no commercial component. The parking will be provided on the ground level and within two levels of subterranean garage with a total of 217 onsite parking spaces. Access is via Orange Avenue. The project itself is six stories, two of which include mezzanine levels, and has a total overall height of 85 feet. No variances are requested, no CUPs are also being proposed. The project completely complies with the Downtown Specifics Plan design guidelines and standards. Staff worked very closely with the Holland Partner Group as well as Carrier Johnson. Staff does recommend approval of the combined stage one and stage two design review. At this point, I would like to introduce Mr. Tom Warren of Holland Partners.
I'm Tom Warren with Holland Partners. And as you know, my company focuses on walkable neighborhoods and working to build communities that are suited to the urban character of those neighborhoods. And so people who like to live there have the opportunity to enjoy the amenities of cities who developed in that way. As you know, we've done another project here recently. We've gotten that approved and we closed on the land several weeks ago. In the time that we've been working in Glendale, we're continually surprised and just impressed with the number of projects, the number of commercial developments you guys have seen, the cooperation that we're seeing from the staff, and in particular, under Scott Ochoa's leadership, the way the city treats developers and makes sure that the issues of the city are being addressed, but also helps that process along. In some cities, it's not as well coordinated and you end up stuck between different departments. And our experience here, working with Mark Berry, Hassan, Velia, has been much different than my experience in a lot of other towns. So I'm not sure that's a reputation you guys have always had, but I have to compliment your city manager and staff on that process now. Like I said, we're very excited to be in Glendale. We're doing this project as a result of the experience we had at Brandon Wilson. And just, well, I don't know what to say about that. It's been good. Regarding this site, the prior approval, as you know, was for a much larger building, 16 stories in height, 201 units, and 185 feet in the air. That's not the project we're doing. We have scaled this back dramatically. We now have 166 units. It's seven stories and just 85 feet, so 100 feet less than the prior project. We're not asking for any variances. The specific plan is well drafted. And as a result, it's actually led to quite a few, you know, nice features in the building. The stoops along the entry, the townhomes, and the wider sidewalks, which will accommodate pedestrians. I think we really support the city's goal for pedestrian character along Orange Street. And we have worked to combine these two projects, or at least aesthetically join them at the street level, so that there's a unified character. There will be revenue generated for the city out of this project. There's going to be annual property taxes of about $45,000 a year. We'll be contributing $258,000 for the in-lu art fee, nearly $1.2 million for park and library fees, $400,000 in plan check and permit fees, and almost $600,000 of school fees. So as far as the design goes, I really have had a good time working with your staff, with Velia, with Stephanie, with Alan, with my design team, David Gonzalez and Mike Labar. And coming up with the design, I think you guys will really enjoy. I'm excited to see this building brought into the downtown and to continue your revitalization. So I'd like to introduce Mike Labar with Carrier Johnson, who is the principal in charge of design of this project.
I need your name for the record, sir.
My name is Michael Labar, principal of Carrier Johnson Architects and Urban Planners, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here again today and very exciting opportunity for us to talk about Holland Partners' next project in Glendale. If I could have the next slide. I think it's important to begin our discussion, understanding a little bit of the context in which we're building. Your Downtown Specifics Plan has been very well written. It's very clear and it's understandable. And consequently, we have had an ease in working with it and your staff to identify the priorities in the hierarchy, if you will, of the urban context. I want to point out a couple of important features, though. First, the intersection of Brandon Wilson, I think we all know is an important landmark or gateway intersection in the city. It's a commercial-oriented street, Brand is. Orange and Wilson, this intersection here and the subject of our site discussion today, is also an important intersection, but a less traveled street. And then just one block over from that is Central. And what we took of note is that once you go west of Central, the building's character and scale and land use changes from that at Brandon Wilson to Central and Wilson. This is smaller commercial buildings, and then it moves into apartments. So what this means is the site today is a very important transitional site from Brandon Wilson over to Central and the neighboring community. This is the existing site today, and this is our proposal for that location. It's a six-story building and is very intentionally designed to emphasize the horizontal nature of the building. And that was purposefully done as that transition from Brandon Wilson to over towards Central Avenue and beyond. So you see that there's layers or sections to the building that emphasizes the horizontal nature of it. Another exciting, unique feature to the building is this serpentine feature or ledge that traces the outline of the building and really, in a subconscious sort of way, tricks the eye to follow from the top to the bottom. Again, it's another visual trick to break down the mass and scale of the building as we transition to the residential neighborhood beyond. You can also see that we are introducing a wider sidewalk, street trees, and a variety of architectural features that include bay windows, balconies, and terraces. Now, the serpentine architectural feature also is utilized to emphasize corners in strategic locations, such as this one right here on the west side of the building. The west side of the building is also adjacent to an existing alleyway right here. And although we don't know what the future may bring with future development on the adjoining property across the alley, it's important to not treat the building as having a front and a back. So we've designed carefully all four sides, as you can see here. So this is adjacent to the alley, but it certainly is not the backside of the building. Indeed, we have a courtyard that opens in this area to the western and southwestern light, so that the courtyard residents also have a lot of natural light. On the corner, at the ground level right here, we also have another amenity area and cafe kind of environment for the residents to use as a common space and secondary entry in this location. Transitioning around the building, you see this view on Orange Avenue and our neighbor to the south. To the south of us is an existing parking lot and an office building off to the left. These two box elements here are existing mechanical vent shafts and stairwells. They house utility equipment. There's actually a ramp, a garage entrance ramp of our adjoining neighbor that goes down in this location here. Our garage entry is adjacent to that, which aligns with the garage entrance across the street at Brandon Wilson. And here again, you see that serpentine architectural feature that is utilized to emphasize corners and break down the mass and scale of the building. In this illustration here, you can see the ghosted outline of the previously approved project at this location. I wanted to bring this to your attention because now that the Brandon Wilson project next door across the street is moving forward, we now know what the scale of this neighborhood is starting to become. And we think it's important to have that transitional scale between Brandon Wilson and the commercial corridor of Brand over to Central and beyond. And today's proposed project, we think, is consistent with the specific plan and the character of the future development of the neighborhood. Here's an exciting night shot that also emphasizes a part of the specific plan with the Pocket Plaza located and originally approved at Brandon Wilson, as called for in the specific plan, that we're also replicating across the street and creating the complementary sides to the intersection. Certainly, Orange and Wilson is not the same as Brandon Wilson. We like to think of them more as cousins of the same family, but they're not the same design. And at the same time, there is a harmony between the two that's very exciting, we think. The level of quality of materials and colors is consistent with the previous project. Also at the ground level now, we have seven townhomes adjacent to the streets. Each one of them has an entry porch and landscape planters adjacent to them. The entrance for the residents is located directly at the corner of Orange and Wilson at that Pocket Plaza, where you enter into a lobby lounge in this location here. There's also, as I mentioned in the other slide, an amenity of a cafe and casual seating area for the common residents of the project to entertain guests, meet friends and family. The entrance to the parking garage is here, as I mentioned earlier, opposite the one at Brandon Wilson. Utilities, electrical rooms, transformers are typically located along the alley and out of view from the public right-of-way. As was mentioned by staff, there's 217 parking spaces in this garage for 166 units. When you move up to what we'll call the mezzanine level, one level above that, there are additional amenities for the residents and outdoor terrace spaces. This outdoor terrace space here will have an outdoor fireplace, a spa, casual seating areas and gathering areas, and lush and exotic landscaping that I'll talk about a little bit later. There's also a direct stair connection from the street in this amenity space below up to this level as an extension of that cafe. And think of it more as an extended living room for the residents that are there. This larger amenity area can be broken down into a yoga studio, a clubroom, and other kinds of facilities for larger-scale entertaining by the residents. And it also has a glass wall along here that can open up and spill out to this patio directly for an indoor-outdoor flow. The townhomes along the street also have a mezzanine level within them, highlighted here in blue, that complete the row home at this level. Going the next level up, what we call the podium level up, is another landscaped courtyard, this one being a little bit more passive in character. It has outdoor gathering spaces, it has a water feature, and a significant amount of landscaping, and is intended to be a quieter space, more passive space, versus the one at the level below, which is intended to be the active space. Also at this level are a variety of residential units, 166 in total, including, on this level and the levels above, which are all similar floor plans, a total of 52 studios, 73 one-bedroom units, 24 two-bedroom units, and 10 three-bedroom units. So a good mix of unit types and sizes dispersed throughout the project. On the roof of the project, we also have a large terrace area and garden that completes our open space for the overall project. On this level, we have nearly 5,000 square feet of roof terrace and garden. And overall, our open space is in excess of 27,000 square feet of open space and amenity area for the residents, which is well over half the size of the site. Also on this level are the mezzanine levels of the top-floor units, some of which have access directly to outdoor terraces at the top level. Included in our packet of the stage one, stage two submission is detailed landscape plans and plant pallets that provide for a lush character and frankly, we think is a desirable exotic-looking landscaping. But at the same time, it's water-conserving and consistent with the Southern California climate that we all have here, especially on a day like today. The colors and materials of the project are illustrated on a color and material board that are right here. They're also noted in your stage two packet, but I'd like to briefly walk you through the basic materials. We're using several different materials to emphasize the residential character of the project as we transition from commercial to Central and beyond. And one of those is this top level or band here is of cement fiberboard of a horizontal siding nature, so it has a residential quality to it. The orange pieces emphasize the bay windows that protrude in these locations here, and they're a metal panel, as are these pieces up here, metal panel. The white serpentine shape or ledge that transverses around the project is smooth trowel plaster that is white versus a textured plaster in these locations here. And the difference between the smooth and the texture will also give the illusion of a change in material. We also have perforated metal balcony railings, as well as glass railings. And both are consistent with the character and quality of set in precedent by Brandon Wilson previously across the street. At the base of the building, we also have colorful mosaic tile and porcelain tile in this location here and at entry doors to the row homes. So mosaic tile on these features and porcelain tile in other strategic locations. Finally, on the side adjacent to the neighbor to the south, there is a grade transition between our site and the adjoining site. So one of the reasons you see this wall here is that there is a step down to their site versus the height of our site. So it's a partial retaining wall. We're also providing planters at the top of that wall so as to cascade landscaping down the wall over time.
Excuse me, is that the side? Where does that face? Does that face the alley?
That's facing.
Big Five or no, the north, right?
This is facing to the south, so you're looking north. So this is facing to the south. So the Big Five and alley would be to the left in this view.
The medical office is behind it, looking at the... Oh, okay.
Correct. So the medical office building would be behind you, looking at this. Here's a view of the courtyard, as if you were at the alley, looking at the courtyard side of the building. I also wanted to mention that in this stage two submittal package are a variety of detailed drawings. As you know, at stage two, we work closely with staff to get into the details, not just the overall concept. One of the features that we're providing in the design is the lighting of the building. We think that accent lighting at night will be a very attractive feature and also emphasize the importance of the intersection in the transitional neighborhood. So the numbers here illustrate the various types of light fixtures. And at the bottom in the photographs are examples of the type of lighting that we would have, including uplighting and downlighting, lighting in arcade ways, those sorts of things. And then also, the specific light fixtures are actually included too, as further detail as illustrated here. And similarly with the landscaping, the landscaping have detailed plans, not just the architectural piece of the project. That concludes my presentation. We have our full project team here to answer any questions that you may have. And we really appreciate the opportunity that we've had to work with not just the planning staff, but the building department, the fire department, and your engineering department to work together to come to this fine project today. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for the architect team? They're done. I have a number of speakers. Varej Martian, followed by Judy Kendall.
Good afternoon, honorable mayor, city council, staff. My name is Varej Martian. I'm a board member of the Glendale Historical Society. I'm here today on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Glendale Historical Society, and we would like to express our opposition to the demolition of the Joann Fabric Building, formerly Alexander Market, as it relates to the proposed project at the Orange Avenue and Wilson Street. This building was built in 1938, designed by renowned architect Morgan Walls and Clemens. The Alexander Market is one of the best remaining examples of streamlined modern architecture in the city of Glendale. We believe that the building is eligible for listing in Glendale Registry of Historic Resource and concur with the finding of a historical resource technical report prepared by Jones and Stock Associates in 2006 for the Glendale Downtown Specifics Plan and environmental impact report. The TGA disagrees with the conclusion of the Historic Resource Evaluation Updated Report prepared by Kaplan-Chen Kaplan, 2007. The building does not meet the criteria of local historic designation. The Glendale Historical Society strongly supports growth strategy that builds our community future by preserving its path through adaptive use of historic buildings. And we prefer to see alternatives that include rehabilitation and incorporation of the existing structure into the design of the proposed project. In conclusion, I think we should look at the bigger picture. The Glendale Historical Society encourages the city to undertake a comprehensive citywide historic resource survey, or at the very least, historic resource survey for commercial buildings, to identify and create a database of the properties that are of local significance. And this survey will benefit parties involved, planning department, decision-makers, and property owners in the community. And we would help such last minute, I mean, we'll avoid such last-minute disputes over historic resource significance, and help guide the city future growth by identifying the developer areas, as well as important buildings that are better suited for rehabilitation, reuse. The historic survey would also assist property owners who may be interested in pursuing designation to qualify for tax benefits under the Mills Act. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today.
Judy Kendall, followed by Sam Menuchyan.
Mayor Quintero, members of the council, my name is Judy Kendall, president of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce. I'm here today on behalf of our Board of Directors of the Glendale Chamber, who at their August meeting took a position to support the Holland Partners project at Wilson and Orange. We believe this will provide what will become needed housing in the downtown area, and will also assist in achieving the city's and businesses' goal in creating a more vibrant environment in the downtown area in which people can live, work, shop and dine, and do business. Thank you.
Sam Menuchyan, followed by Alyssa Asmarien.
Good afternoon, honorable mayor, council members, city manager, city attorney and staff. My name is Sam Menuchyan. I'm the director of the Commercial Division for RE/MAX. I am the broker representing the Murray Pepper Trust that currently owns the property. About a year ago, I was retained by the trust to explore and look at all the available options for the subject property. After completing my due diligence, it was my opinion that the highest and best use for the subject's property was a podium-style multifamily apartment. As you know, about four to five years ago, you approved the high-rise condo development project for this site, known as the Alexander. It was a beautiful project, but unfortunately, as you know, what worked at that time and that market does not necessarily work in today's market. So I arranged a meeting with Mr. Lanza Faim and started the dialogue for exploring the options of modifying the current entitlements to meet today's standards and market. Mr. Lanza Faim was extremely supportive and open to the exploring the ideas of a smaller project. However, he made it very clear that he would not allow us just to cut the top of the building and try to force that design into the current site. I agreed 100% that whatever we do at that site, it was imperative that we come in with an exceptional design and an outstanding developer behind it, especially if I was going to stand here one day and be willing to put my name with it. And that is where Holland Partners and Mr. Tom Warren stepped in, along with Mr. Rodney Kahn and their design team. I have to tell you that in my opinion, they hit it out of the park. I've closed over several billion dollars in these type of transactions, and I have to tell you, this is probably one of the nicest designs I've ever seen. In closing, I wanted to thank some people that helped us through this process. To begin, our esteemed and very professional city manager and Mr. Hassan Hagani, our planning director, for supporting us every step of the way. And for Mr. Lanza Faim, Mark Berry, Velia, Alan Loomis, these guys are just unbelievable. We have the best of the best, and they are the reason, and city employees like them, that make me very proud to sit as a commissioner on your civil service commission. Also, Mr. Tom Warren, Holland Partners, and Rodney Kahn for not cutting corners, willing to take the financial risk and build a project like this. And at last, but not least, I want to thank you as our city leaders for the foresight and the vision that you implemented for the Downtown Specifics Plan and planned ahead so many years ago to bring such a positive improvement to our downtown. I thank you for this opportunity.
Alyssa Asmarien, followed by Edlin Yosefi.
Good afternoon, honorable mayor Quintero, city council members and staff. My name is Alyssa Asmarien. I'm the president of the Armenian American Chamber of Commerce, Greater Los Angeles Chapter. I'm here today to express my full support for the Orange and Wilson project, both on behalf of the chamber and more personally on the local... both on behalf of the Chamber and more personally, on, on the local Mid-Bran Boulevard business owner. As you know, the Armenian American Chamber of Commerce is a nonprofit organization committed to serving the needs of business community in U.S. and abroad. We're an organization that encourages entrepreneurship and innovative business activity here within our wonderful city of Glendale and beyond. The project before you today is exactly the type of project we support. These 166 high-quality apartments are a welcome addition to Orange Boulevard. The Orange and Wilson project will bring increased food traffic to downtown, create jobs, and continue to build the number of permanent residents in our downtown. The building design is fresh, interesting, appropriate in scale, and meets all the city code's requirements, including parking without asking for variances. As a local business owner across the street from the site, I'm thrilled to see the project come to life. My restaurant favorite place looks forward to serving the residents of Orange and Wilson sooner rather than later. For this reason, the Armenian American Chamber of Commerce, I fully support this project and on behalf of the Board of Directors. Thank you. I hope, I'm hoping you will vote yes on this. Thank you.
Edlin Yosefi, followed by Henry Amar.
Hi, my name is Edlin Yosefi. I'm a resident of Glendale, California, and also a student at USC. I just want to say that I'm really excited to see this influx of new development projects. And I was here for the Brand and Wilson hearings, and I'm really excited for that. And I'm happy about this project because I think it's a good compliment. And I also want to, I just want to say that I'm really happy about the design of this building, because I think that it's very much in tune with the youthful spirit of this new Glendale that's on the rise. And as a youth living in this city, I'm excited to see projects like this and further projects similar to this one coming into the city. Thank you.
Henry Amar.
Hello, my name is Henry Amar. Thank you for allowing us to be here. I, I was born and raised in Glendale. I'm a student at USC, and I still live in Glendale. I'm really excited. I'm so happy with the turn Glendale, that I've seen Glendale take throughout the few, past few years, and just the direction it's going. I am in full support of this. I am so excited. I drive up and down Brand every, every day, and just to have this design, but also just people in the downtown area, and I think the type of people this might attract, I think not only would it be good aesthetically, but I think it'd be good for, to bring Brand more to life, and just bring stuff, not just at the Americana, but up and down Brand. I'm, I'm in full support of it. I think it's, it's a great design, and I'm excited. I genuinely can say that I'm excited about this project and hopefully future projects like this in Glendale. Thank you.
And excuse me, would you say that after your graduation, you'd be a potential renter in this project?
Sure. If, when I get the right paying job, I definitely would consider it.
I was about to ask, I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask Ms. Yosefi, but I thought, ah, let me wait till you come on.
So I'll, I'll let you know after May, so.
Well, maybe you can even find a job right there on Brands, if you don't, you can walk to work.
That would be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the final speaker card. Any questions? Mr. Manukian.
Question, the porches that are, that are coming out, that are opening up into the street, in the design, I don't see them. Could you point them out? Is there a better picture of it? Because I, I like that feature of it, with the, with the townhomes on the, on, at the street level, that have a porch to the street, kind of enhances the street experience, I guess, for, for the residents who can just kind of step up, step out into the street, and go do what they need to do, either walking or bicycling or...
Exactly. I think, I think that was the whole idea behind having the row homes along the street is to, to encourage the pedestrian experience that's, that's already being established across the street with the previous project. The entry stoops are typically, you'll see two planters on either side, so where you see these two green areas, there's a few steps right here.
Okay, those are the stairs?
Those are the stairs. And the, the, the height of the stoop varies because the site isn't perfectly flat, so as you go down one direction or another, the, the lighting in here is a little bit bright on the screen, and that may be why you're having some difficulty seeing them.
Okay, no, thank you.
But that's, that's true of most streets.
I was just wondering whether it was stepped back, or it comes straight to the street, it looks like.
You do step back, so the, the entry porch and door is, is pulled away from the sidewalk, and you go up the steps.
But not, but not the stairs, but not the stairs.
But not the stairs. Exactly.
So the idea of having that stoop where you could be reading your morning paper, sitting on your steps.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
People that live there will be looking at their iPads in the morning.
Or their iPads, I'm sorry, a little old school.
While they have their herbal tea. Okay, question, Mr.?
I have a question. Is the, do, do the Holland Partners own the property, property currently? Are you the current owners? Have you purchased it?
Not yet. We, we have this property under contract with Mr.
Oh, good for you. You're lucky.
Mr. Murray Pepper.
Is Mr. Pepper here?
I don't believe so, but Sam Manukian was here on his behalf.
Mr. Pepper's not here.
We, he's not here, however, you know, we're in contract, and the other thing I wanted to emphasize is that we have arranged for the financing for our project, and once the approval is granted, if you guys see fit, then we would close and start construction in the first or second quarter next year, as soon as we can get through the permitting process.
Mr. Pepper's not here. Are you representing Mr. Pepper?
Absolutely.
Would he agree to designate this as a historical resource?
Absolutely not.
But are you aware that the Glendale Historical Society is opposed to demolition of the historic Alexander's Market Building? It was built in 1938. A lot of this is repetitive, and it was designed by the renowned architects Morgan, Walls, and Clements. The building is one of the best remaining examples, the best, of streamlined, modern commercial architecture in the whole city. Are you sure he still doesn't want to designate this a historic resource?
First of all, I found out this, sitting back there, thirty, maybe twenty minutes ago, that this was even an issue. This is the first time we've been hearing about this, and it still doesn't change the fact that that, compared to what's there, come on.
I don't think you have an appropriate appreciation for the historical designation.
With all due respect, sir, I'm not qualified to make that determination, but I could stand here for the next three hours and, and go on and tell you why I would not in any way...
Would it, let me ask you this. Would this, would a designation of a historical resource and a further EIR as to historical significance be opposed by Mr. Pepper? A further, I think there was some discussion that we didn't do enough of a historical evaluation. Would he be opposed to that?
He wouldn't even consider it.
Would he, would he realize a loss, a financial loss, if this were designated a historic resource and the, the building pictured could not be built?
Would he sustain a lot?
Would he, would he realize a loss?
Unless the Historical Society is ready to write a big check for the building, I mean, absolutely, yes, there would be a big loss.
Thank you. Does he know that the four of us on the dais right now, as a result of the actions of the city council last week, could, regardless of his wishes, regardless of the excellent design, have designated a historic resource, and although may not be able to absolutely block the development, create significant hurdles to the development? Does he know that?
That I can't answer for you, but...
Did you know that?
No, I, I, I thought we lived in Glendale, California.
Where were you last week, Mr. Manukian?
Not here.
Where were Holland Partners? Where was Mr. Pepper? Is it, is it appropriate at this time to make a motion to designate this a historic resource?
Yes, it is inappropriate.
It is inappropriate?
Yeah, for a number of reasons. One, it's not on your agenda. Number two, you don't have any evidence that it's a historic resource, that substantial evidence that contradicts the, the environmental, that's a letter from the Historical Society, but you, you have to recall, Councilman Njerian, that the city council adopted a environmental impact report that concluded that this resource was not a historic resource, was not eligible for our local register. So you would need a significant amount of evidence to contrast that, and the council would need something to contrast that, to designate this a historic resource.
Morgan, Walls, and Clements, one of the best remaining examples, streamlined, modern.
But the, the in-depth, and I would, I would, I would submit that, although I'm not in the position to question the Historical Society's knowledge in this area, I can test, state that a, a environmental impact report was prepared that analyzed this in significant more detail than is present in that letter, and addressed those particular issues with respect to this resource.
And indeed, a project was approved previously on that EIR.
It was that it's not, it's not eligible, is that correct, Julian? It's not eligible for our local register?
That's correct, and I would add, under the Public Resources Code, a previous EIR or negative declaration is conclusively presumed to be valid if it has not been set aside by the court, and so the statute of limitations has passed for the filing of a court action to challenge the previously approved project and the, the findings that were made to support it back in, in 2007. So the, really, the question before the agency at this time is whether or not there needs to be a subsequent or supplemental EIR, and that would be on the basis of new significant impacts or the discovery of information that was, new information that was not available at the time that the previously certified EIR was approved. This information concerning the historical, alleged historical nature of the project was available information, and it was analyzed in that EIR, it was conclusively determined at that time not to be historic, was not challenged in a court of competent jurisdiction, and therefore, as I stated, it's conclusively presumed to be a valid analysis of the project. The basis for the preparation of an addendum to a previously certified EIR is, is whether or not there are new significant impacts, and since this is a, a smaller project, all of those trigger points of the analysis that would have compelled the preparation of a subsequent or a supplemental EIR were not triggered as set forth in that addendum, and that's what's being presented to you in conjunction with the design review, which reflects the modified design of the project. So from just a pure SEQA standpoint, the analysis of the cultural resources issue has already been completed, and unless the agency, the city council, determines that there is new significant information that wasn't previously analyzed, or a significant increase in the severity of previously identified impacts, or there are new severe insignificant impacts, then it's appropriate for an addendum to be prepared, and as I think I indicated, that addendum does not require a public circulation or even further a motion or resolution of approval.
However, excuse me, however, when the initial EIR was prepared, there was a retention of some of the historical elements in the building, and now this doesn't have any of that. They had, they were extending that column, and I think using the actual facade. So is this not a sham that we're playing on the Historic Preservation Society by telling them that the EIR doesn't call it out, but the developed proposal had retained elements? Now that old, that old plan is gone, and here's something that doesn't have a single thing, and it's too late for them to make an objection and to challenge?
I would just note that, as I stated, that it wasn't determined by the EIR that was certified to be historical, and whether the project design included components of that within their design, and that was within their discretion, it wasn't a mitigation measure, because it wasn't a conclusion that there was a significant impact on, and historic resource. So therefore, that was not a mitigation, a technical mitigation under SEQA. I think it was a design acknowledgement, but it was not required by SEQA.
Well, I, I see something.
If I can just add, it's...
Patently unfair about that.
It's, it's critical, because applicants are entitled to some finality when environmental review is conducted, and it's not enough that somebody, even reasonable people, may disagree on whether or not this is historic, that, that has to have been something that we missed initially when we did the environmental review, and that's not the case here, it's just reasonable people are disagreeing. And, and those disagreements were taken into account when that environmental review was conducted, and it was analyzed, and ultimately, the consultant concluded, and ultimately, the council concluded, that it was not a historic resource deserving to be on our, our local register or otherwise.
True, but that could have been challenged by the Historical Society, and they relied on the continuation of that particular element that they find to be historical in the initial design, and I just feel bad for the Historical Society. I think they had one, is Mr. Mardian here? I think they put one over on you, and this council, four of us, can make this historical. So at the appropriate time and a future date, I will ask for this to be put on the agenda.
I think that the real specific item that was raised by Mr. Mardian for council's consideration, certainly as we look forward, is to be specific, to be strategic, and that would be looking forward at a survey, and trying to make sure that, that we understand that, what those resources are in the community.
I mean, you may be saying, Njerian is flip-flopping his position. But I say, if you can't beat him, join him. So I'm joining the Historical Preservation Society in their efforts to maintain this as a, one of the best examples of streamlined, modern, commercial architecture, and I hope my colleagues would also be consistent with their previous feelings and join me at the appropriate time.
Yeah, I'll have my comments at the appropriate time. Mr. Manukian had a question, and then we'll go to you, Mr. Manukian.
Just for the record, I wasn't here, and I have not expressed an opinion on what was, what transpired, what transpired last week, but in terms of the EIR, you said that if there were any new information that was presented today, we could look at an addendum to the environmental impact report?
Not...
My question is whether the year or the architect are new information, and there, there were information that was not present when the EIR was, was prepared and the analysis done. Is any of that new information for us to consider at this point?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, member Njerian, it would be...
Manukian.
I'm sorry, Manukian, I apologize. I'm thinking, I'm thinking carefully about my answer because of some of the things that you said.
I confuse myself all the time.
Well, because you, your question had a lot of components to it, and, and so the issue is, you know, new information that could not have been known at the time that the EIR was, was certified. And so the information about the architect was known, about the history, it was, there were roughly, I don't know, ten or fifteen pages of analysis that was a condensation of the Kaplan Chen Kaplan, Cultural Resources Analysis of that building that was done. So it was, there was a separate study that supported the analysis that concluded that the building was not historic under the local, state, or national criterion. And so the new information is not just any new information, but it's information that is both significant, and it's also information that could not otherwise have been known or discovered at the time of the certification.
So it's not just information that, that was missing, it has to be significant as well?
That's correct, under SEQA, yeah.
And could not have been known at the time the EIR was prepared?
That's correct. Subsequently discovered and significant information. And there, and it's not new information anyway.
Correct. I mean, that was a key point. I mean, if staff or Julian could correct me if I'm wrong, but everything that's in the Historical Society's objection or, or letter was addressed in the environmental impact report.
Just as a quick clarification, because I was involved with Intracorp at that time when they were doing the entitlements for the Alexander project, that corner design element that was incorporated in the previous design was just, was not a requirement, it was just a gesture at that time of the architect that he could work that in. All of the same information was available at that time, and this was not, designating it historical was not a question then, and nothing has changed. And as I said, that design element of incorporating that little piece on the corner, to me, which was bizarre, but nevertheless, was not a condition, it was just a gesture on, from that architect's. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll start, I'll start talking, I didn't plan to, but I'll start talking about the historical aspects of this building, which I don't believe it has any. I grew up in Florida, where there are many, many examples of the modern, streamlined modern architecture, especially in commercial structures. Glendale has very little. Glendale has very little, so when I read, it's one of the best remaining examples. There weren't that many to begin with here in the, in the city of Glendale, and this one certainly doesn't rise to the level of any significance. Quite frankly, I think it's a horrible example. That one little corner, and that's about it. The rest of it just is concrete, and in my opinion, doesn't meet any of the criteria. But the reason that it can't, and I'm a big believer in rehabbing and, and reusing buildings, the reason it can't be used, in addition to the design not having its significance, is that narrow sidewalk. And that sidewalk in that corner can't be more than six feet. And in fact, there's going to be a turn lane there that's going to alleviate traffic on Orange and a much wider, a much wider sidewalk. So that alone, when the original design came before us, that alone, for me, was reason enough to, to dispense with that, with that, you know, concept. This project doesn't require any variances, doesn't require a CUP, doesn't require anything. It's basically exactly what we had in mind when we came up with the downtown strategic plan. It fits all of the criteria. And please remember, for everyone watching this later on, that what in fact we did was to downzone the rest of the city of Glendale. The multifamily neighborhoods where there's been way too much development, they have all been downzoned. Actually ran into some issues with the state of California because of the downzoning we were doing, but the ideal was to create this downtown housing. We're on our way, and I'm very happy to see that. I think this is a, a great design that's going to fit in with the other Holland property there on Brand. And when you think about that street, you look at it today, and you look at what it will look like in the next few years, you're going to have two beautiful buildings filled with, these two SC graduates will be among the kind of demographics that we're looking for, and they'll be going to all the restaurants and theaters and all the rest of it, all the mom and pops on Brand, because as one of them said, it's about more than just the Americana. We have to move it further down Brand, move the nightlife further down Brand. But you, so you'll see these two buildings, and then we're on that other corner, we're going to have a courtyard, a Marriott, we're going to have a three-star business-style hotel with a restaurant at the, at ground level. So I mean, it is going to change Orange completely. It will be a total and complete upgrade of what we've had there for the past, I don't know, it's been at least thirty years, I think, since, certainly been twenty-something years since we had that empty, we've had that empty lot in the very downtown. So I support this project all the way. I think it's a very good idea. They, they stated that the financing is in place. The amount of money that the city of Glendale will realize, along with the school district, forty-five thousand in annual property fee, our art fee will be two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand, the park and library impact fee, park and library, that'll be one-million-one-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand, and permits and plant checks and so forth will be three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, almost four-hundred-thousand dollars. And then finally, the schools, the Glendale Unified School District will receive approximately five-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand dollars, half a million, over half a million dollars. So I think this is a slam dunk. I think it's important that, that this moves forward, and I think we're all going to appreciate in the coming years when we see these, these two buildings go up. Who's next? Mr. Manoukian?
In, in general, I've been opposed to the downtown strategic plan with, by density housing. However, considering what was being planned for here before and what it is today, it's certainly less of a dense project than, than what it was before, and I'm pleased for that. I will, and I generally try not to agree with the mayor whenever I get a chance, but today I will agree with him, and both in terms of what is coming there, in terms of the design, as well as the, as well as the project itself, rental housing, and what it will do in the, for the mid-brand area businesses, as well as the downtown. So I will support the project.
He's also the kind of young person that we're hoping...
Yes.
Okay, who's next?
I'll go. Well, I want to thank my friend, Mr. Najarian, and he is my friend, so I know he won't mind a little poking, to show us that the ordinance that was passed last week is not draconian, that there is a process that has to be followed, that council or this board cannot just willy-nilly, if we don't like a project, place a building on the historic register, that there is a process that has to be followed, the building has to have been deemed as historic, it has to go through the Historics Commission, that it's not that easy to do. In fact, I think it would be a very difficult process. So thank you, Mr. Najarian, for putting us through the exercise of seeing how that works. I think it's a very, very nice project. I especially appreciate the use of different materials, which makes such a difference on these buildings, using the mosaic tiles and the porcelain tile and the siding. I think it's going to make something that does have an, have an interest from the street and more of a residential feel. In terms of the Joann's Fabric Building, as it's known now in the community, I'm very torn, because I think the building does have interesting elements. Is it historic? I don't know. We kind of have dueling theories. The problem for the Historical Society is that the EIR has been certified, and it can't be challenged now. And these, this whole exercise that the developers went through, we're going, were on the basis of a certified environmental impact report that said the building was not a resource, and they, in all of their due diligence, went along, went with that. And it's not an old, it's not an old assessment, it's not an assessment that was done forty years ago, where you might say, well, they didn't appreciate the era then. It was something that was done very recently. And the EIR could have been challenged at the time. That said, I think that it is a loss, and I would have liked to see some mitigation from the developers. I think that would have been a good gesture to the city. I definitely agree with the society that what we really need to concentrate our efforts on is that historic citywide survey, so that we don't constantly run into these problems right at the moment where something's going to be demolished. That would, wouldn't solve all of our problems, but it would solve a lot of problems, and at least we would know which buildings are and which buildings aren't problematic. So I do have sympathy for the Historical Society's position. I think that there should have been some mitigation, but for me, the overriding issue is that legally, the EIR was certified without mitigation. And it sounds to me, from what our city attorneys are saying, that we can't demand mitigation now after the fact, is that correct? Without any new evidence?
That's correct.
Well, that, that puts me, you know, as a policymaker, into the position of, even if I thought there should be mitigation, and I think there should be, I don't feel comfortable making that determination now. I don't think it would be legal, it, it sounds to me like, because the EIR was certified without mitigation. So that's one issue. But overall, I think it's a very nice project. I think it will be a definite benefit to the neighborhood. I know the businesses across the street, my favorite place is a wonderful restaurant. If you haven't been there, they will benefit. They'll have a couple hundred people living across the street who I think will find that that's their favorite place and discover a lot of other businesses on Brand. And as the young people who came and spoke, and thank you, by the way, for coming back, this is an exciting vision of our downtown. It's a vision of a downtown that's lively, that's twenty-four hours, that has people on the streets all the time, that has thriving businesses, and it's something that I'm very happy to, to be a part of in my time on this council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Najarian, final comments? Or not?
No more comments, thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Rule call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manoukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Good luck. Make a speedy construction project, and let's have some young people playing chess with Mr. Manoukian, or his children, actually. Okay, what's next?
Good journey and a second.
Move to Jaren.
Second.
Thanks.
Rule call.
We have a closed session.
A closed session.